Good evening. Today is Tuesday, November 10. This is the regular meeting. We're going to go through the four education. And I motion to approve the minutes of the October 27, 2015 regular meeting. If I hear it.
Second.
At least in discussion.
Laura.
Just a quick comment. The minutes reflect our December 8th early start time, our school start time meeting at 6:30, but we've had to move it till 7:00.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna have to change it for the minister.
Okay. All right. That's unanimous. That passes. We have an opportunity for public comment. Do you want to use the public? Have a lot of community comments this time?
Big chance, babe.
Okay. Same thing. I'm just here to help you out. We will now introduce Dr. Richard Cooley, Dutchess Bosie Superintendent.
Thank you. Just a few words of introduction. And I want to thank you for allowing me a little time and room to introduce myself. As background, I began my career as a high school English teacher, and I have worked as an administrator in five districts in three states, North Carolina, New York, and Arizona. I was for the last 13 years the superintendent of schools with Valley Central School District in Orange County, New York, and the town of Montgomery, generally encompass that town. I spent some time this summer with Mr. Phelan to talk about the needs of the Rhinebeck School District and actually the ways that the Dutchess Bosies can better serve this district and others. And currently, just for your information, you have about 33 Rhinebeck students in the Dutchess Bosies. 22 of those are in career tech programs. Three are at the Beta Alternative High School. And you have about eight students in the Sawpoint Center or other district placements. Like Mr. Phelan, I invite you to call me if I can be of help to you at any time. I also hope you will see a greater Bosie's presence at some of your activities here in Rhinebeck. So I look forward to making this a nice collaborative relationship. And I know we have some work to do, and we are brilliant personally, and happy to get started. So thank you very much. I'll be happy to entertain a few questions, although I've been on the job since the beginning of September, I probably don't have many answers, but you can certainly ask the questions.
Well, I just want to say thank you for being here. It's great to meet you. And I don't want to put you on the spot, but you're here, so I just wonder sort of if you had a few words to say about kind of a vision you have, or a couple of things you'd like to see Bosies work on, and I know you just stepped into it, but sort of what do you see something moving like in the future?
Well, we do have some heavy lifting to get communication back to a place where it should be. We are trying to explore some new offerings, career tech in particular. I think there are a lot of opportunities, and I would rather go slow and, you know, look at a program to every year to invite our guidance counselors and your guidance counselors to talk about those, to build up that variety. You know, we have kind of good enrollment, but there's not a variety of offerings, and I think we'd like to change that. There will probably, over time, for the sake of, I'm probably saying too much right now, for the sake of survival of Bosies, there will probably be more movement to satellite programs. So if you think that there would be, I use Rhinebeck as an example, this is probably a poor example, but let's say you had a very high interest in an agriculture program. It might make a lot of sense to put that at a local school district. And especially if there were clusters of other students in the area who might also have an interest. So I don't want to say too much about that because we're just exploring it. We're having a few challenges with just figuring out how to have systems thinking at Bosies and how to move forward as an agency. We have some great things going on, but I don't think we amplify or talk about those enough. And I think the Bosies in general needs a kind of brand. If you think of Bosies around the state, sometimes you say, oh, yes, Quest R3, they're very important in terms of state aid predictions and state economy. And I'd like to see us go in that direction. I have some ideas, but it'd be premature. But certainly, we have much work to do. But we, and we also have to come together as an agency. Teachers think of themselves as teachers in whatever program we have, and then we have educational resources, which is, you know, we don't talk a lot among each to get to one another, and so we're gonna do a little better job. So external communications, well, as internal, until we kind of get our act together. So, good, nice, good, hard question.
Well, I-
I didn't have a chance to introduce myself. Richard Cooley.
Welcome. Thank you for coming out in the rain. I'm wondering sort of how you envision working with your component districts in terms of listening to what they feel like we all need, and how you would take those ideas and sort of throw them into your master plan.
Right. So part of my goal this summer, by visiting each of the component superintendents, we had kind of a general talk about, which inform mostly what I just said. You know, I'm sure you know, it's kind of a great group of superintendents, articulate, bright, thoughtful. And so I think there will be time at our monthly meetings to talk about what are the programs you're looking for. Some of those satellites that I was talking about may be born out of those conversations, and indeed, at this point, some of that has already started. There was a need for regional summer schools that came up from superintendent. And that would be a great thing that the Bosies could do, and then we could rotate it, so it might be in Hyde Park this year, and next summer in Rhinebeck, like that. And, you know, that looks like something everybody could profit from. And, you know, mostly, it's, I hate to say it like this, but it's probably the truth. The job of the Bosie Superintendent, to some degree, is a little bit like a marketing job. And so what I need to know is what the consumers, that is you, are interested in getting, and to the extent that we can make that happen, we will. So. Uh-oh, too many questions.
We're full of questions.
They actually nobody's there.
Yeah. I don't know if it's a question exactly, but we, many of us just attended the NISPA Conference down in the city, and we were at a communications workshop, pre-convention workshop. Fascinating, you know, talking about communications challenges with using social media and public relations more broadly. And I went up and spoke to the gentleman who was sort of, you know, chairing the panel and said something about, well, you know, these all sound like amazing things you're doing, but who really does this? You know, we're a small district, and we don't have somebody with a Dutchess designated job to be the communications and public relations person for our district. And he said, well, you know, maybe you should talk to your Bosies. So I don't know if those kinds of supports for districts in Dutchess County are anything you would be willing to contemplate, but I'm sure there are many school districts that might be interested.
We're willing to contemplate anything. I shouldn't say this, but I'll say it anyway. Said too much already. Capital Region Bosies have a very exciting communication public relations effort. And indeed, as I was walking out of my previous place, they were contracting with those. We do do public relations mainly print, but that is something we'll look at as a way to help districts. You know, it changes so quickly. You know, once upon a time, that looked like web support, website support. That is so old hat now. Everybody wants to make their Facebook page look great. So it changes quickly, and I think, not being defensive, but the Capital Region Bosies is very large and has a lot of resources. Not unlike Putnam, Northern Westchester, but it'll take us some time to get there, but I appreciate the suggestion.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, very.
Just piggybacking on what Deirdre said. One of the district, our district's goals for this year is around advocacy, to try to advocate for positions that are of importance to us, one of which, though not the only one, is funding from the state for our schools, you know, looking forward to the financial picture that all of us are going to be in, including the Bosies. Is that something that you could contemplate sort of doing on a broader scale? You know, one little district might have not much of a voice, but the Dutchess County Bosies organizing the county schools might have a louder voice.
I'll answer that in a couple of different ways. Some of that organizing is already going on. I think one of the things I can do, or we can do as a coalition of superintendents, is to draft letters and documents to the legislature. The commissioner, who if you haven't met her, and you probably saw her at NISPA, but personally, she's much better than that, and you know, there's a room full of, I think she understands very well that some of these things are legislative, and they're much harder to crack. But I have seen some effective work done by a, like a white paper sent from the Dutchess County Bosies, or I'm sorry, the Dutchess County superintendents to the legislators and things like that. That's relatively easy to do once we kind of come together and decide. But I think there are a lot of agencies right now doing some of that, like there's Lobbying Day and all of that stuff that is helpful. The trick, really, is parents, not superintendents, not boards. And when we do it, I think people don't think we're voters. They really want the parents to storm all the data getting there with them. That's hard.
That's good.
Absolutely. As you think of things, or if you have a concrete suggestion, send it our way, or send it through Joe, and I'll be happy to give it some consideration. We are to the credit of really Chuck Curry, the Ulster Bosie Superintendent. We are having the commissioner come on the 8th of December, and so, but again, she's not the one. She says very cutely, and kind of in an understated way, of course, you know, I thought standards were my charge, not the governor's. It's actually very cute in that way. So certainly open to all suggestions.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I thought I could get away with it.
Silly you.
I don't think I stayed at these meetings for about an hour since you grilled me.
It's kind of an exciting time, I mean, to create that year on board, and actually, there's so much potential in ways to use Bosies in exciting ways for all kinds of reasons. So it's really exciting for you to be there, and I know that there are a lot of sort of institutional things that have been worked on, and, you know, just diving into it is a task unto itself. But I was just wondering if you had thoughts on, it took me a while to realize that I've been on the board for a while, that, you know, certain Bosies, and you've kind of mentioned that already, like Capital Region does this sort of media thing, Ulster County seems to do, I don't know, maybe they do like alternative energy kind of stuff, or I'm just wondering, certain Bosies have like things that they particularly highlight, or kinds of programs that follow thematically, it seems, or things that they excel at. And so I just wondered if those conversations, I know it's down the line, but I'm just curious how those conversations happen already, like what are we good at and what do we need to be good at? So that it's not, you know, it's not just one, I'm like, oh, Rhinebeck needs this, or this needs that, but sort of the ideas can also generate it from you.
So let me talk about the downside of that. There are many, unfortunately, many Bosies who don't have a good branding. Or Ulster is where I worked. And although they were very good people, I don't think you'd say to yourself, oh, or Ulster, here's their brand. And that's a little bit where some of the Mid-Hudson Bosies are. So we're gonna have to do a better job of that. I do have some ideas. I don't want to-
Yeah, I'm not asking for those ideas, just more generally, kind of conceptually.
But part of the challenge is, I can have a great idea, but if it's not going to serve the districts. So it's kind of this. From my work as a superintendent, I have a very strong feeling that there is a great need for work in literacy. In a school district like Rhinebeck, you probably have pretty good young readers, but almost everybody struggles with the middle level, middle grade writing. And writing's hard to teach. And I think getting that kind of a brand so that, you know, maybe you wouldn't be so interested in the early literacy program, but some districts might. You might be very interested in the middle grade. Now, those things are already in place here, so I don't want to, not here, but in the county. So I'm not going to say, oh, this is bad, or take this. So it's a little bit of a negotiation, and back to marketing, and also talking about what the Bosies can offer over and above, or in addition to what you're already doing that makes it better. So it's a little bit of a challenge to negotiate that, but from my point of view, writing at all levels immediately raises the bar. And the Common Core has shown us that, and my background's English, so I have an affinity for that. Doesn't mean that that's what'll happen, but that's kind of what I'm thinking at this moment, and have had some conversations with superintendents about that.
Well, that's, I think that's all great. I mean, I really, again, just appreciate that there's some new energy at Bosies. And, you know, we're a district that we do a lot well, but we're also really interested in the, again, kind of jumping off of something that NISPA convention talked about, you know, how we work with other districts to help each other, what can we get out of learning from other districts, and what do we, what strengths do we have, and certainly Bosies could fit into that. So again, it's an exciting time, so thank you.
It is, and I'll just jump onto that. You know, I've met a lot of people around the Dutchess County area, the Chamber of Commerce. You know, I met the president of Dutchess County Community College, those kinds of things. Many of those people are kind of new, kind of getting started. So there is a kind of synchronicity going on that's kind of fun and energizing, so crush your fingers, and any help, we're happy to take it. Thanks very much.
Thank you for coming.
So we'll move on to the board committee reports.
Yeah, I think that's it. Okay, so we met on October 30th, and our guest was Dr. Davenport, who came to talk with us about electives at the high school. We've been spending a lot of time, of course, as you guys remember, and he's just recently approved on the ELA curriculum. And as my colleague to my left said, why don't we look at the things that are, you know, sort of outside of the core? Why don't we learn more about what's happening with electives? And essentially, what we discovered is that we have an incredibly robust and rich array of offerings. We talked about patterns where we saw students clustering, a lot of interest, for instance, in psychology. Talked about ways in which after-school programming could be connected to those elective courses. And then we moved into talking about how the master schedule is constructed. So as, you know, we all know, the, each high school class is relatively small, about 100 students, for instance, in this year's senior class. And with all of these electives, it's an incredible challenge to build the master schedule. And one of the things we communicated with Dr. Davenport is parents don't really understand how that process works. And we were enlightened to learn that everything is built around student demand, everything is flexible. Students do come and ask for accommodations to be made around their schedules, and the guidance counselors do their utmost to try to find those accommodations. He gave us some specific examples. And these requests that come from students are, of course, only through ID number. There is no personal name attached to the schedule requests, and it is a tremendous challenge to build every year. So I know we often hear about the master schedule, and people sort of think, well, why can't we just change it? It was actually incredibly eye-opening for us to learn how the process is undertaken. And actually, Dr. Davenport said he would try to communicate a little more about that to parents through his newsletters, so the understanding was greater. We talked about AP courses and the open or modified open enrollment system in Rhinebeck for AP. We talked about the tremendous sort of upside of that, that any student who's interested in AP really does have entry into those courses, although sometimes, of course, they struggle, and there may be some challenges with that as well. Demand has remained high and consistent for those courses, and Dr. Davenport pointed out that close to 100 AP, 180 AP exams were announced last year. Think about, it's a really tremendous number. We got an update from Marvin on the middle school computer lab, and as I think everyone remembers, there was a big push toward the end of the summer to just try to get the physical space to the place it needed to be. There was some time lost also because math testing was taking place in the computer lab, so some of the work around the curriculum has been delayed. Marvin tried to talk us through where we're at in terms of what still needs to be accomplished. And Lori Keating came for a day-long visit. She will be returning, I believe, in late November, early December, to work with faculty to continue to build that curriculum. The container projects were really the focus of a lot of our discussion, and those really have yet to be sort of fully formulated. Our agenda, how will this committee interface productively with CDEP? So we, of course, get reports through Laura about what's happening in CDEP, but we want to think kind of mindfully about what we can do in our committee to assist. We brought up cross-district planning with Bosies, and we were very excited to hear you would be here tonight, even around the question of, you know, if we couldn't sustain a particular kind of AP course in our district, you know, how could we pool together with other districts for those kinds of, kinds of course offerings? And then finally, in an austere fiscal climate, something we've been talking about around the board table for several meetings already, how will the district preserve its very strong, really, signature academic program? Are there cooperative arrangements and practices that could be explored? And that's a very open-ended question. Our next meeting will be November 17.
Any questions for Curran?
Was there any talk when you're looking at the electives about the declining enrollment, about what could happen, you know, as the numbers, some of those classes are small to begin with, like-
Right.
You know, whether it's satellite classes, or, you know, a way to keep those electives.
So we didn't get into specifics, but I mean, we, actually, Joe shared with us that there had been some talk at one point about, you know, using technology to bring students together with teachers, you know, at disparate campuses where, you know, we can't afford to float a course on our own, that that was something that had been talked about. How long ago, Joe?
A long time.
Like 10 years ago, or I don't know how long ago. So we talked about that, but we also talked about, you know, other ways in which perhaps we could join together with campuses nearby, you know, districts nearby, and that would be sort of this satellite idea, perhaps, that Dr. Lee was mentioning.
I just had a question, a couple of questions about the computer lab.
Yeah.
I'm distressed to see that two weeks of instruction time is lost there because of the math testing. Is that math, so I guess maybe I just, we don't have to go necessarily into the details here. I mean, I understand how math testing works, and that just seems like an awful lot of time for a district of your size. I'm curious how that happened, and how that might play into the concerns we raised around, table here, around standardized tests.
And losing instruction.
Well, it's based on the fact that those assessments use computers. Each individual student has-
Just two weeks is a lot of time?
Well, from that lab, yes, but they're cycling kids from various classes through there. No kid is sitting there for two weeks testing, but that lab is tied up for about two weeks, shuddering all the kids in, say, in the middle school through that lab. Now, that, you know, the assessment piece, as a separate concern, you also are aware of the fact that we're in the process of bringing, I think, at least four laptop carts into the middle school. And again, when all that stuff comes in towards the end of September, it takes a while to get it set up. So in a future year where we have at least four laptop carts and the computer lab to use, that assuming nothing else changes, that period of time ought to be cut down significantly because now you have, you'll have a group of 25 or 30 laptop carts available to move, for room to take care of that. So I wouldn't anticipate it's going to tie up the lab for two weeks. But, you know, engaging large numbers of kids in assessments, regardless of whether they are for good reasons or not-so-good reasons, still gobbles up a chunk of time. And as we started this year, the only lab available for middle, you know, the only collection of a large number of computers is in that lab, so I didn't have a source.
Right, so I appreciate that information. But regardless of whether they do it in a lab or in classrooms with a laptop, it's a lot, it's like more time than I was conceptualizing about math testing, in my mind. And maybe because I related to it more, as we discussed at various times, the APPR and the need for a local assessment at the beginning of the year, and assessment at the end of the year. So it really does layer over teacher evaluation. I think that's why math testing really came here, was because of legislation that required us to do teacher evaluation. I just think we should be really aware of that, because for middle school students, like in my mind, I mean, you know, the beginning of the year and the end of the year, well, the elementary school, that's one year in one classroom, so that's the end of the year and the end of the year. But if you're a middle school student, I'm just curious how many, because you're in English, you're in history, you're in science, right? So that must be why it's taking up all those, I mean, I'm just trying, I'm trying to understand so we understand another sort of consequence of kind of APPR and testing, because that's, in my mind, we're a small district, that that's a lot of class period, and a lot of students populating all those class periods, taking that test. I'm sure several of them are taking different ones. So, you know, I'm concerned about that. When Marvin does a presentation here, I think I'd want to be asking him about that, because I think we should have, personally, I think these legislative ideas about like 1% or 2% of instruction time for testing is like a preposterous way to figure out testing is like a percentage of learning time. I don't know if you're all familiar with that, but it's something that's out there. But I was just struck by that, that was like two weeks. Like how would we understand a child in the sixth, seventh, eighth grade, how many periods do they, how many hours do they spend in those two weeks? An individual child taking a test.
Well, I think it's a good question. I think Marvin can answer it when it comes to do the annual data presentation. We can also talk to him in our curriculum committee and try to find out how much time per student. Because that's different, perhaps, than saying the lab was tied up for two weeks.
Right.
And I can't sit here and say, yes, that translates to-
Sure.
-two 40-minute periods over the course of two weeks. That doesn't seem nearly as bad as if I said, oh, yeah, we have kids tied up for X number periods for two weeks. So I don't want to jump to a conclusion, but I think the question about what is the impact on individual student, in this case, in the middle school for that testing, I think that's a fair question to ask. And it's also good information for us to have as we go into an advocacy cycle.
Yes.
You know, all this stuff's going around, are stated about APPR and Common Core, and that's a good piece of information for us to know, not jump to one conclusion or other. And I can't sit here and roll with that for you.
So, because one thing, now that it's, I've been doing this for a couple of years, I'd like to know is, you know, you know, I'm struck, just to say, just to personalize it a little way, I'll give it to my middle school, like how much testing teachers do, right? Like teachers do a lot of assessments, day in, week in, and week out. Does math testing replace that, or is that in addition to? Because, you know, we don't get, we can't grasp here without like a deeper look at sort of your teachers' classroom assessments that happen, you know, a quiz here, a quiz there, a test on Friday, a test on- So I just, I think it would be helpful to have Marvin address kind of the impact of math testing, and how useful we find it or not, because, again, the particular test was our decision, but the choice to do a test at the beginning of the year for all the kids was not our, it was not our- kids is not our decision.
I think that's an excellent point, and we didn't really touch on it because we were more concerned about the fact that the resources of this new computer lab were completely tied up with that as opposed to the learning that we would want to see going on in that space and the development of the curriculum, which is kind of unfolding in real time. So losing two weeks is a big blow, you know, in that sense as well. But that's, we should take it back.
Diane?
Right, I think even, I mean, even if with the laptop carts it'll get better, it is something to look at because if two weeks this year, I mean, that's what, for middle school or five classes, that they didn't get, separate from taking the tests that they weren't to be able to take. Can we not use the library for testing? Do you have computers here?
You can't test a class of 25, 30 kids in this library.
But some, I mean, well, I don't know how it, you know.
Well, I would, I'm going, without getting into it more deeply than I could speak to it with any kind of knowledge base, I make the assumption that when the building principals get together to decide how this kind of assessment takes place, they're working with their staff to do it in a way that makes sense. And if they felt that it was feasible to piecemeal it on all the different single computers around the building, and then that would cut down the time, I'm sure they would. Again, we can find out more about that. And I'll also mention that, without getting into any detail, because it would be way premature to do that, sound like a Dr. Hulley now. So I'll take a page from his playbook, but I will tell you that in the negotiations we're having regarding the 3012 DAPPR, there's been a lot of discussion about this. I'm not saying it's good, bad, or indifferent, but it has been a subject of conversation, especially at the secondary level. So on that front, stay tuned there. But I think the information that you're talking about, having us be more aware is, makes a lot of sense, so we will do that.
Thanks.
Other questions for Purcell?
Okay. All right, who wants to personnel?
Okay. The topics that we talked about in our meeting were the status of the Renbeck Administrators' Association negotiations, non-unit employee employment conditions, and we very briefly touched on the superintendent evaluation process, simply to note that there's some material that we need to go over and talk about at the next meeting. The specifics of the other two topics are confidential, and we'll discuss those in executive session.
Communication.
Those are mine. So we spent the majority of our time the other day talking and looking through new enhancements to the website, which are coming fast and furiously. The food services section of the website is going to be updated within a week or two, rather than the tab which exists there, which just says lunch menus. It's going to become a much more robust section of the website with links to My Schoolbook and school lunch menus and newsletters that Larry Anthony wants to start developing. So there'll be a lot more information there. Steve also showed us, in the teacher portal section of the website, a new reservation section so that teachers can check out the laptop or iPad carts, reserve a lab for work, reserve professional development from our tech integration specialists. So it's a really helpful tool, not only for the teachers to be able to book time, but for us to begin to assess how much the teachers want to use the equipment that we have in the building, and if we've got enough to suit their demands. So he's going to try to look at some ways to put in sort of a waiting list in case, you know, one teacher's blocked everything for the day and doesn't really necessarily need it, and how many teachers are not getting what they need. There's also a section in that portal for photo opt-outs, and it's comprehensive across all three buildings. So whenever we're putting together new images for the website, or for newsletters, or calendars, or any of that kind of thing, we can quickly see which kids, parents have opted them out of having their images in print or on the web. He also showed us, Ed Schindler, our webmaster, has been developing some how-to videos for teachers, for their webpages, how to build a webpage, how to add things, edit things, delete things. So they're really wonderful. They're real-time, you can see Ed moving the mouse around the screen to show them exactly where to click and how to add things to their personal webpages. This came because he's been monitoring the hits to the new site, and of course, the homepage is the greatest number of hits, but teacher webpages are the second-greatest attractor of people from around. So if there are teachers who are still hesitant to use their website, Steve's going to reach out and try to do some personal work with them about what they need and what would be helpful to them, and try to do some one-on-one PD. He also shared with us Tom Blass's homework helper videos for his math classes, which are à la Khan Academy and are really just brilliant, and really great ways for kids to access the lessons and review it over and over again, with the voice and demonstrations. So that's really great. We also spent some time talking about how to illustrate the work of the district and our goals around advocacy, CDEP, and the budget. And so we're going to work to try to figure out ways to show, you know, the district at work in terms of meeting those goals. We also talked about student email addresses, which are still sporadically being used, depending on the teacher's style of communication with their kids. Office 365, though, has the offering of the full suite of Microsoft Office applications that come along with that email address. So we need to try to get that word out to students who may not otherwise have those tools at home. They will have the online versions of those through their account, which is, could be very helpful to them at home. We are going to be having a special meeting coming up in a week or in two weeks of the communication team because of the information that's in your packet about the Common Core Task Force. And we would like to try to draft some sort of response to that tool for feedback. You know, what we, as a board, would like to communicate to the task force, and we certainly don't want to do that in a vacuum. So if you guys have input, that would be terrific.
I'm glad you mentioned that because I was reading this impenetrable document.
It's very large type, though.
Well, it is large type, it's true. I didn't say it was illegible. But seriously, I am very interested to know what the committee's view is about what type of input we should be giving, because it seems to me that these things aren't necessarily addressed to the kinds of comments that we would be inclined to be making. They're more like, you know, taking the pulse of parents who are, you know, members of the state electorate at large. Did you guys talk about that at all? Do you have any thoughts about it?
We did, because of course, our greatest concern is, well, one of our greatest concerns is the conversation around APPR and the fact that we would like to see multiple measures. But you might note in the six points, the teacher evaluation system is not included. So, but, you know, they do mention things like reduce the quantity and duration of tests, and so there are some glimmers of hope in here, but we would like to try to address things like the disaggregated groups and how you test those kids in an appropriate method, and how you get valid measures, assessment measures. So those are some of the things that we were kicking around the table, hoping that maybe you guys have some thoughts, too.
We're meeting on the 23rd of?
Yeah, that's right, that Monday.
Yeah, there were, if you look at the website, so if you Google the Common Core Test, you can see it, there were three places you can kind of get comments. One was telling your story, like, here. And then there was the most thing that's printed out here mostly, which is like a proposal that's a solution to a problem, which seems, I think, absurd, like, that's not their job, they should be asking everyone, like, "So what's your idea to do better?" But then there was a third one that I think might just be general.
It was your story, tell your story. They're all in the packet.
Tell us your story. So, you know, we would figure out how to, where to place it most appropriately out. We didn't get a chance to dive into it too much, but I think we'll just take all the kinds of ideas that we have around this table that are in agreement, write something up, and then we can share it with everyone, see if there's a general agreement, based on the kind of conversation that we've had here before. But in the meantime, you know, either now or between when we meet on the 23rd, people want to say the kind of make the points and email them to us, what you would want to say, please do.
Do you hear?
Yeah, I just want to second what you've said, that there's an attempt to manage, you know, the formatting and the way the questions are formulated, and there's an attempt to manage something that's essentially, right, not manageable. And so I kind of, I mean, from the standpoint of the invitation, you know. So I think we should feel empowered to make our statement and match it in the way we see it to be appropriate, without getting too hung up on the format that's given to us.
Fair enough.
And we'll figure out a way to make it work.
All right, any other questions? Okay.
So. That's me. We spent most of the meeting looking at the small binder that makes up all the details of the facility's condition survey. And there's a lot there. So it was a kind of first chance for the committee just to take a look at it. Sheldon's going to meet with the company and go through it kind of line by line, every little thing, and then he's going to make a priority list for the committee to look at at our next meeting. So that was most of the meeting. Sheldon updated us that the four exterior cameras at CLS are going to be up and running this week. They're mostly, they're similar to the cameras that are here at the high school, they're just like for security, basically. And then a question had come out from our breakfast with the board about security and the public using the track during the day. So the committee talked about that briefly, and just felt like it was, the aides are out there with the students, and they know most of the community that uses the track, and that was more of a benefit for our community to be able to use the track than to not allow that. Next meeting, we'll be looking at the survey in more detail.
Are you going to be putting together sort of bullet points of, you know, Sheldon's prioritized list for the board to take a look at, so we can see what we're sort of talking about, to try to craft?
We could. I mean, I think that since Sheldon was just looking at this for the first time himself, basically.
Yeah, it's hard to know.
Maybe the second time, he glanced at it right before the meeting. It was a little premature for us to start ordering the priorities of things, and there were some inaccuracies in the report as well that he needed to discuss with the architecture firm. These surveys are very generic, and they don't necessarily reflect with perfect accuracy the specific conditions of our, of all of our buildings, although, you know, much of it is accurate, I don't want to mischaracterize it. But I guess the bottom line is that there's a lot of sort of spade work that needs to be done before we're in a position to say, "Okay, we'll focus on these things, and we'll sort of backburner these things." I think we'll get to that point sooner rather than later.
All right. Okay. Bob, to the business.
I had the great, good fortune of being a volunteer at the Discovery Festival on Saturday, where there were, oh, I'd say over 200 kids and their parents, all wandering around with jaws wide and eyes open and just amazed. The theme this year was sort of Maker Faire-ish, so there were lots of art projects, and there were seven teachers who volunteered their time to run activities for kids, and it was really tremendous. We had kids flying in the gym. It was really quite wonderful.
Other good news? Do you hear?
Well, I think it's good news that so many parents have chosen to participate in the survey that was sent out about school start time. And Tom told us some amazing number of, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but how many people participated?
There was 350 responses that covered about at least well over 500 kids, 500 students. So we have a good.
That's probably the best response we've ever gotten.
Yeah, it was a good response. And, you know, using Survey Monkey now, and learning how to use it and all that good stuff, we can think about other surveys. I was sitting here looking at this thing with the Common Core going, gee whiz, I could put that in a survey out of this.
It's going wild, the survey.
Get their responses to see how they feel. I mean, you know, I could think of many different things now as far as that, you know, it's, so it was good, it was a good response. I wasn't expecting so many responses, but it is an important topic.
Yeah, it's an important topic, and people have put a tremendous amount of thought.
Oh, there was.
And care, and, you know.
Comments.
How articulate our community is, and, you know, really, people are putting, they're taking it seriously, and they're taking the time to communicate with us. So I think that's really good.
Yeah, I mean, there was over 160 written responses, and one, to one question, and over 50 responses in another comment section. So it was quite a bit to go through, and still go through.
And unlike the last time the board did a survey, we didn't have to sit there and tally everything, it came nicely. That was really nice.
Similarly, I think having that topic or any topic for our breakfast with the board session, or coffee with the board, rather, was helpful. So I was glad to see parents coming out.
Yeah, we had a very good turnout.
And then also, I was not able to make it to the Veterans Day ceremony today, but you were there, Rick, and would you want to?
Yes, it was a wonderful ceremony, as it always is. I shared earlier that I talked to Bobby Boomer, who does a terrific job of organizing it, and she said that they added 50 new veterans this year for recognition.
Great.
If you've been there, it takes forever, a wonderful forever, for the kids to walk across the stage with their graphic presentations and honor those veterans. As I said last year, many of those guys are my friends, and they really appreciate it. Really appreciate it, so.
Great.
All right, other good news? Okay, you want the old business?
You know, I just, this is a reminder to myself, as much as anyone else, on my list of things to do, which is to share with the rest of you information from the convention. So I just want to throw it out there. Other people I know who said, "Oh, we should share this or share that presentation." So I haven't done mine yet, but.
Lisa?
Would it make sense to schedule a specific agenda item for, you know, sharing information from the convention, so that we don't just sort of roll the item over from week to week? You know, have a discussion of a topic each week until everybody's had their say?
That was really close to you, Mark, as the keeper of the agenda.
Just for a second, I'm going to look at me. Fine with me. I don't know how much time we want to take up, we should probably.
Put a time limit on it.
How much time?
Yeah, time is a good idea.
Well, let me make a suggestion that if there were any pieces of learning that occurred to any of the individuals of you who were there, that you especially want to share out with your colleagues, before the next board meeting, drop me a quick email and say, "I'd like to talk about this session," and then we'll get a sense as to how many people want to talk about how many things, and then we can schedule them, and then plan to come to that next meeting and talk a little bit about.
Makes sense.
X topic. And if it takes us doing that at a couple meetings or three meetings, great. If we get it all done in one meeting without being here past midday, that's okay. So I'll be, I'll look forward to getting your suggestions as to what struck you and what you'd like to put out there for your colleagues. Just let me know.
All right. Mark?
Joe and Tom, can we get the latest and greatest on transportation? How are we doing?
Well, Tom and I just passed a test for our CDL. So, if you don't mind if we pick up a couple of ones here. All the town streets, because I'm speechless. It has gotten a lot better over.
It has gotten a lot better over the past month. It really has. Buses are arriving on time. And if it really wasn't for one particular bus on one day, we would have had about seven or eight days in a row of constant getting here on time and leaving on time. And it was basically from a new bus driver who didn't quite know how to get here and get here on time, but he's, he was on time today. So that was good. That was route three, which--
What's that?
That's a new number. At least it's a new number. Share the experience.
You'll remember the conversations on our favorite webpage. So that's all, that's all I'm going to say about that.
So we hadn't, the new bus driver started this week, so it seems to be working out, well, it's only been two days, but it does seem to be working out fairly well with one little hiccup on the first afternoon. But so things have been going a lot better as far as that's concerned. Still working, we are working, which now we're going through and starting to bring in individual bus drivers to go over their routes just to make sure we have it correct. Because we have found some routes to be very light and other ones to be fully packed as far as that's concerned. And we want to ease that burden on some of the drivers, because some, some drivers do have, you see them get here in the morning, you see 40 kids get off the bus. It's like there's two kids to every seat and it's about filled to maximum capacity, where another bus will come in and three kids get off. And it's just some of the things that some of the routes are, you know, we found out some of the things and reason why. I mean, a lot of, when one route in particular has a lot of drivers, you know, a lot of seniors with kids, with their own siblings and neighbors, and they're bringing them in. It's like, jeez, it's only a couple of kids now. We've, we've talked and found out that's one of the reasons they're, they're driving in. So it has, I think it's significantly gotten better. There's still some hiccups, but we have now all our drivers in place. And it does seem to be working better. But, you know, there are still some areas that we need to improve on. I think yesterday, or yeah, yesterday, we had a training for the drivers dealing with our mandatory sexual harassment training and DASA training, which enlightened them. Because, you know, remember, some of these drivers have not driven for this school district. I'd say about 60% of the bus drivers are former Durham drivers who work for us. There are other Durham drivers, but they work with other school. So it was actually a pretty positive meeting yesterday. I think they took very, the recommendations from, from Mr. Kreps about how to address issues that come up and how to spin them positively and not, you know, you know, have that shouting voice, you know, sit down on the back, you know, to come up with better ways in which to engage the children, which I thought they, they were really good. And we're going to have to do some more training along that line, which, which was good, you know? I think we have different expectations than other school districts, and I think they're, they're actually enjoy that, that we respect them and that they, which is a good thing. I think they, they feel good about that. They feel like they're valued, which is good and it's helping out. I think the things that, you know, some things are coming up for the first time, like we had the before school program and things of that nature, but it actually has worked out very well. I was really concerned about that, that, you know, all of a sudden, you know, they know this route this way and all of a sudden now we're introducing new kids on Mondays only, sometimes Thursday, sometimes Friday. But that's working out well. I mean, I haven't had any calls from the before school program saying, oh, you forgot to pick up him or forgotten. So that's worked out well as far as that's concerned, so.
We had our first emergency evacuation drill a couple of weeks ago. And we were a little nervous about how that's going to work because it's, you know, in any emergency, we've had to evacuate the building, because I need, you pick your emergency, okay? I mean, of its very nature, it's a bit chaotic because it's not the standard routine. And the building principals told me that that is, that's the smoothest evacuation drill we have ever had, for whatever that's worth. It went smoothly and it went quickly. Kids were out of here at least five minutes sooner than they'd ever been before. So that worked, you know, we get these little positive surprises every once in a while. And I can tell you from personal observation that kids coming off the middle school, high school run, first thing in the morning, are getting here with plenty of time to get to their first period class. I know that was an issue early on. We're standing out there every day observing it firsthand and, you know, typically, I'm walking into the school at 7:23, all the buses are in, everybody's here. They don't need 20 minutes to lawyer in the halls. They can get to their classes in seven minutes. And that's happening on a regular basis, so that's--
Forgot to mention that.
That's--
That's true. Past few days--
Tom and I have set a goal for ourselves that when pickups and drop offs run flawlessly for five days in a row, then we will not feel compelled to be standing out there with a steno pad writing down numbers and times. So I will tell you that we're still standing out there with steno pads, but we're getting, we're getting close to not doing that anymore, so.
We almost hit our mark the other day, but--
Tom, since we're entering a new sports season, are they going to be prepared to take all the sports runs now?
We've put that in their lap right now. We're waiting to hear back from them. We do have another bus company that will do it. I'm concerned. I want that commitment from them, because they can't use one of the drivers that is riding here.
Can't use a home to school driver.
Can't use a home to school driver. So they have to really permanently assign us a sports driver for the winter. I've been concerned about that. And the winter is, and a lot of schools have this issue too, especially with contracted ones, is that they're just, isn't, people are just waiting around just to do it. But we do have a company that's working with us that's filling in in the meantime. So we think they could be able to do it in the winter, because really, we only have about one bus run a day. It's only--
It seems like it could get a lot started.
It's a lot easier. But I'm more concerned when we get to the springtime, when we have multiple teams from baseball, softball, track, lacrosse, and so on and so forth. And the issue in that time, too, is it's not like one a day. Because of rainouts and everything, all of a sudden, I might need three or four buses, you know? So that's, that is a concern of ourselves, but that's a concern of almost all districts. And that's something that Mr. Boucher has relayed to me, is that a lot of school districts are experiencing this, even with their own drivers. They're just not enough drivers to go around. So I have some ideas, but I want to see how this season goes and, in fact, you know, what we do with the bus contract, because if we do go out to rebid, I got some different ideas about how to do that, because it can be a big issue. And it's, it's hard for a company to have your home to school and then have three or four extra drivers just sitting around for a couple of months out of the year. That's a hard thing. And they're looking for that full-time employment and that. But I have some ideas if we do have to go out, but I can't discuss them.
Okay.
You want? I have another, we have the school and the old business here.
Yes.
Would you mind just sharing for public knowledge about the recent information we've gotten about the retirement system payments within the context of our--
I did want to ask about that.
Of our budget discussions.
Right. And it's been very good news as far as the pension system goes so far. The employee retirement system has set their rate. I can't repeat it off the top of my head, but it's, yeah, it's, remember, it's about 15.8, which is down a bit. But when we put it to the salaries from last year, it saved us about $70,000. So that's a nice good thing. The ERS has an estimated rate between 11.5 and 12.
TRS, right?
TRS, yeah. Teacher Retirement System, sorry. So using the 12% would save us approximately $150,000. So between the two of them, we can see a savings of about $220,000, which is--
That's right.
That's good. I'm hoping, I don't see health insurance or workers' comp or social security, any of those other ones going down, but at least with these two factors, you know, they'll go down. My concern in the future, though, is, you know, once again, they have lowered their expectations, you know, for, you know, Wall Street and that. So, you know, they didn't get the greatest return last year. If I remember, it was like 5.5% or so, something in that nature, which is kind of below what the overall was, but, so of course, they make it up on ourselves. So what we don't is, and I don't want to say the employees, some of them are in tier five and six, they, they're, you know, they're having to contribute and sometimes more than you typically would. So, you know, my concern, though, is if something would happen at Wall Street, those rates could turn around and go the other way. And that could have a, have a devastating effect on the school district. But at least for this year, it does, it's in the right direction.
All right, the old business? Public comment? Any other comments? All right, see you now. You want other? I have two items other. I just wanted to remind the board that we need to schedule sexual harassment training under our sexual harassment policy. As I mentioned in my goal review, you know, I'd be looking to do something maybe at before our November 24th meeting. I don't know, not everybody's going to be here for that. I really would like to do this one time and not have to bring Marvin twice for that. So maybe we look at, I know it seems kind of like a cruel punishment, but--
December 22nd.
Well, again, we can't do it on the 8th, because we're going to have other activities before our meeting. So maybe that second meeting in December.
Either one of those.
I don't, you keep looking at your calendars and telling when--
I can do it in January.
Oh, yeah, it can happen anytime. I mean, we've done it later in the year. I'm just throwing out dates, and the first date I get when all seven of you say you can be here at 6 o'clock before 7:30 board meeting, I'm all over, just because I want to get it done.
Either, either one of those will be fine for me.
Yeah, 22nd is fine.
Maybe Jan, the only reason I'm thinking January might be good is if that's the same night that Marvin's doing his presentation. There might be people who'd want to come see it, and I'm not sure if December 22nd people will come. I just thought. No?
Isn't it like a, is, come see the training?
No, the data--
No, 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 because it'd be the same night he would do his presentation.
I'm trying to hold this up.
No, not for the sexual harassment training.
That would be weird.
Yeah, would be weird.
The public come to our training.
That would be--
No, I'm sorry. I meant the, the presentation would make the board meeting.
So that would be the 12th or the 26th--
So he only has to come one night as a whole?
Yeah.
I kind of like cannot have--
Not to come more than once.
I have to have--
Yeah. 22nd, I think, like not a great idea for me.
Once we do a cooking exchange--
I was, I was going to say--
You're going to do it better soon.
We could do a bus holiday thing, dinner.
Yeah, so the sexual harassment training.
Drink over here.
You know what? As we get, as we track motion to Marvin doing his presentation, I'll just float that data. Right now, it's up in the air. He's waiting for data from SEG.
Okay.
So we can do a complete presentation, so stay tuned. That's where I raised the issue, so we can take care of that. Okay. Mark?
My other one is, it was mentioned in one of the committee reports, but on December 3rd, the Justice College School Board Association meeting, there's going to be advocacy training. And that is coming from NISBA.
Saw that.
And, you know, keeping with our goal on advocacy, it might be worth it for some of us to go to advocacy training. So Marvin, your calendars and the 7 o'clock at Jose's, a lot of carpool, we'll do that. I hope we can talk about more as we get closer, but I just wanted to mention, it's okay to get it on the calendar. Any other items of other? All right, move on to actual items. As I, I have an agenda, so we have a motion to approve the sentence.
Second.
All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve 2015-16 faulty mixed after-school program instructors.
So moved.
By dear--
Second.
By Lisa, in discussion. All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By dear--
Second.
By Lisa, in discussion. All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve a leave request from Erica Parisian to commence honor about March 18th, 2016, that such leave be taken as paid medical leave to the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing to the extent of the 26th leave, and thereafter, such leave be taken as unpaid travel care leave through May 30th, 2016.
So moved.
By dear--
Second.
By Lisa, in discussion. All is in favor? It's, all except Rosenbaum. Opposed?
Abstentions?
Rosenbaum. Okay? That motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools to accept a donation from the writer at ETSO in a total of $95,000.
Second.
In discussion.
I just mentioned that the uncharacteristically, though still appreciated, small amount of this donation compared to what we usually have donated, is really a function of, that request came in after they finished their cycle, provided us with their last donation, so they didn't want her to have to wait until, whatever, they do it again in January or February.
Right.
That's why it's there, but we still appreciate that.
Yes, we do.
All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve additional coaches and advisors for the 2015-16 school year and increase for the 2015-16 RTA salary schedule. Boys swimming, varsity, Kevin Stowers, $4,487.
So moved.
By dear--
Second.
By Lisa, in discussion. All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to move into the adjutant session. Sorry, we need to push it.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to move into the adjutant session. Sorry, we need to push it.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to move into the adjutant session. Sorry, we need to push it.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to move into the adjutant session. Sorry, we need to push it.
So moved.